City Council for the city of the city of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, June 16th at 6:02 PM. Let the record reflect that June 16th also happens to be Councilmember Williams' birthday. So in honor of your birthday, we're going to throw you a very long meeting. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Here.
Councilmember Kraus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunstford.
Here.
Mayor Canning.
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you very much. If you are capable, please stand and join for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything it does to us all.
Just as a reminder, we are conducting this evening's meeting under the flexibility and allowances offered to us by the state of California relevant to the conditions created by COVID-19. We appreciate your presence here, but please request that you maintain your social distance. When you do come up to the mic, you are asked not to touch the mic, speak into the mic. We cannot take any commentary from the room because we are televising on two different platforms, and you can only be heard when you speak into the mic. And you can remove your mask at the mic, but otherwise, please maintain facial coverings. I'll entertain a motion for adoption of this evening's agenda with one modification, that this evening, we will be adjourning the meeting in memory of Ellie Leek. Ellie Leek just passed away this past week. For those of you that were familiar with her and her husband Frank, big supporters of the community on many different fronts, volunteered at just about every event or was a participant in every event. And unfortunately, she did pass away as a result of a car accident. So keep her family in your thoughts for that. And with that said, I'll entertain a motion on this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Vice Mayor Dunstford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. City Manager Kern, welcome back. It is your report. Let's have it.
Thank you. So as of this afternoon, Napa County is reporting 199 COVID cases, 25 cases here in Calistoga, and they reported a fourth death this afternoon.
In the county, not in the city of Calistoga?
Not in the city. So it's very important that people continue to maintain your physical distancing and wear your masks when you're in close proximity. It's highly likely that on Friday, the county will issue orders allowing nail salons, massage therapy businesses, and indoor gyms to open up. So it's a positive step in the right direction. The community pool started swim lessons yesterday, and we're currently advertising for bids for Harley Street reconstruction. We anticipate bringing a packet to award on July 21st, starting construction in mid-August. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Relative to the COVID testing, 19 testing that has occurred in the city of Calistoga, as you've heard us mention previously, your city manager, myself, who sit on a three times-a-week call Monday, Wednesday, Friday at 11:00. After nearly five weeks of requesting, petitioning, screaming, begging for there to be up-valley testing, it was finally accommodated. The first set of tests occurred last week, and then more this week. And they were specifically for the first couple of days specifically for residents of Calistoga, and then they'll be for St. Helena and Yountville following that. We appreciate the support of the county, county public health, and St. Helena Hospital in particular, for helping us facilitate those. And we also appreciate the support of the community for members who did not have much to be concerned about, were isolated, and were not in contact with others for staying away from the testing so that others who had more immediate concerns were able to gain access to that testing. There will be some up-valley testing coming in the weeks ahead. So thank you very much for that, and we will continue as best we can to get as much of that up here as possible. If you do have the means, the time, and the energy to go down-valley for testing where the countywide testing occurs at the Expo Center, we are still in need of as many Napa County folks as possible to be tested. Statistically, that is a benefit, and it's free. You can register online. And again, if you're going to be heading down south to do errands anyway, go online a couple of days ahead and sign up and get it done. I've had it done. I believe Councilmember Kraus has had it done. Okay? Anyone else? It's not painful. It's a little bit awkward.
Uncomfortable.
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 But it's important, especially if you think you may have been in close proximity or have some concerns. With that said, I will move on to oral communication. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code, Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. Is there anyone in the room first that would like to address the council under public comment? Should you so choose, please share with us your name and your address, but you are not required to do so, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
I'm Charlotte Williams, 59 View Road. I wanted to let the council know, and generally the public too, what's happening with the USDA food deliveries in town. And this is also, there's also a Catholic Charities food delivery that's happening. The Catholic Charities food delivery is happening every Tuesday morning, and it looks like it will happen through the summer. The distribution will occur between 9:00 and 10:00 AM at Our Lady of Perpetual Help Catholic Church. And also, the other food distribution that I've been coordinating for the past three years, the USDA food delivery occurs on the third Tuesday of each month at between 4:00 and 5:00 PM at OLPH. And what we've been doing is we have been building a delivery list, trying to do what we can to keep people from congregating. So today, we delivered to about 135 households. We added several new delivery addresses, so I am guessing by next week, we'll be delivering to about 180 households. Last week, that served about 820 individuals. Just letting you know. This is a lot of numbers, but it amounted to 370 boxes of produce between the USDA and Catholic Charities. And I'm looking at about 60 boxes of food. These are things other than produce, and about 50 bags of food for smaller families. Today, we did serve, for the first time in our knowledge, a family living in a car. That was the first time we'd heard about this. And I don't know if it's occurred before, but we were informed. And we know that four of the households, well, I'm aware of three households for sure that have COVID patients or people are infected in town. So we are really trying to up the deliveries and keep people from congregating, waiting in line, and as the summer goes on, from waiting in the heat also, especially the afternoon distributions. So, and I want to say too, there were 20 volunteers who helped today, and about 10 of them were retired people, and the other 10 were people who are not working right now or simply knew that this needed to happen. So they're really getting the deliveries out there, and a lot of people are being served in town. And I, yeah, I just, those, yeah. Okay. I think that's basically my unofficial report. I don't have solid numbers for today. I haven't collated those numbers yet, but so you all know.
Charlotte, thank you very much for you and your group doing. Is there someone, if you're in need of, or someone has the ability and would like to volunteer, how should they contact your group?
They're welcome to call me at 707-889-1788. And my email address is calihome@sonic.net. That's C-A-L-I-H-O-M-E at sonic.net.
Thank you.
And so generally, I'm coordinating those two things. And of course, Helen Archer has Calistoga Cares Pantry, and that's the second and fourth Thursdays in the afternoon. And I am aware of the Seventh Day Adventist Church also doing a food distribution.
Thank you very much. And those resources are also available through the city website to gain access to those as well.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for those efforts. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to address the council under public comment? Yes, please. Share with us your name and your address, should you so choose.
My name is William Ootnamer, and I'm here representing a group that's been evaluating the Bounsell property on the south end of town at Foothill Boulevard. And part of the reason we're here tonight is we've been working with the planning department on part of our evaluation on the site for what would be the best development for that property. And our group here is comprised of some consultants and architects and developers that are committed to the environment and the community, not just bottom line of capitalism, not so often as the developers that everybody sees. So I've been a developer that's been committed to environmentally sustainably designed, built projects, and we've been working to try to identify some of the housing shortages in the community here, and how we can identify those sites and provide affordable housing because that's really the solution to most of this. And we've got a couple of the other members of the team here that have specific skillsets. One is an architect. That's Frank Lloyd Wright, architect, who's been committed to the environmental design. Now, there's a developer that's focused on providing low-cost housing after the Hurricane Katrina. So we are just here today, tonight, here to introduce ourselves and just let you know that we'll probably be back evaluating some of the other sites in the city. Thank you.
So at this point, sir, you do not have an official project or application in front of the city for consideration. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to, yes, please? Share with us your name and your address, should you so choose.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Canning. My name is Richard Hoffmeister. I'm the architect that Bill mentioned. I've been talking with your planner, Zach, and looking at the general housing elements and plans that you guys have published. And I know it's a very strange time. It's also strange for us. We were in Los Angeles, working on a lot of higher-end luxury housing and some affordable, with some density and affordable housing projects. But when the COVID-19 pandemic began, I moved my family to Lodi, California. And so we're setting up shop there, and we're working in Santa Rosa. We'd like to be here in Calistoga and some other communities in Northern California, developing affordable housing, workforce housing. Pretty much have pivoted all of our business interests to that effort because it's the greatest need at the moment. To sort of get started, I haven't been to Calistoga for many years. I took a mud bath in 99, and it was amazing. But we did, we have been putting together sort of a, I guess you'd call it a style manual or some architectural types as kind of a manual of, you know, where we might be going with design. We have shared by email with Zach, a thinking differently about Calistoga's housing needs, an integrated approach to development, which we'd like to leave a copy here for other members to look at at a later time. As mentioned, we do plan to come back in a month or so, and part of my reason for being here today was to do this introduction, but also to go and actually physically walk the sites and consider the maps that are in your housing element and really focus on which sites we think we can get to fruition the fastest. So with that said, we'll definitely be seeing you in probably a month from now, and we'll continue to work with Zach, and thank you very much for the time today. And I'd like to introduce David Lory. He's our, he's working with the modular housing, so he can explain a little bit about how that works in a cost and structure and systems way.
Just a quick comment, if I may.
Yes, sir.
If you're going to leave anything for this council, now that you've presented it under public comment, it is now a matter of the public record, so if there's anything proprietary in there, that's ours now. Understood?
Just open general ideas and some questions too, but mostly ideas that are public.
Okay.
I'll have to have him disinfected as well.
Yes, sir. We'll just leave you one copy of that.
Please introduce yourself and limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. My name is David Lory. I live here in Calistoga, grew up in Marin County. I'm with my company, Housing International, housingint.com. You can look it up. I've got a background in, I worked with Marriott for about 15 years when they developed the Courtyard Division. So I was in hotel service industry, and the last 20 years, been working on workforce affordable housing, using light gauge steel modular construction. So I built in Brazil, Mexico, spent a couple of years in Africa doing very affordable housing. Originally came to Calistoga and were involved in a project here on 414 Foothill. Originally was for a winery hotel project, small boutique hotel, under the certain conditions, and knowing that it may take some time to get something like that through, I made a decision to put a group of very high-trained professionals and companies together as a group to look at several sites here in Calistoga that Zach has identified, one on Earl and Eddie, and the other one on Leekin. So basically, what we'd like to do is come back next month and present a full detailed proposal. I think the city would be happy with some of the economics typically with modular. It's about half the time to build it. It's less money. And nowadays, with, you know, the newer modular construction, it's very soft on the environment. We're typically leads platinum in our projects. It's also very soft on the footprint of the city in terms of sewer and electricity. The other thing I would like to throw out is I also spent a couple of years working with Tesla on affordable housing and incorporating microgrid technology into those complexes. So we'd like to maybe present something on that as well for Calistoga.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Zach, could you please come forward because I'm going to nip something in the bud for all of us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How are you today?
Doing great.
I'm going to save you some headaches and phone calls, and I'm going to save us some headaches and phone calls. To clarify, when a developer of any type of project comes forward and says they are working with staff, we entitle them to courtesy to understand and explore what the rules and regulations of the city are, to share what some of our past learnings have been. To say that you're working with anyone within the city does not infer that a project is being considered or has been approved. And I only say that for you gentlemen because it avoids a lot of concern that some folks may have when they hear you reference our planner, Planning Director. This is a courtesy and service we provide to everyone so that they're not heading down a path that, at the end of the day, will probably not fit within what the city says or needs or wants. With that said, they would have to enter into an official application process, which will go through all of the avenues, including public hearings, et cetera. Zach, have I misspoke on any of that, and have you given any indication as to whether or not this project would be considered, approved, or denied?
Considered, yes, but approved or denied, no, but otherwise perfectly accurate.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. All right. Anyone else wishing to address the council in this room? All right. Is there anyone in the studio audience?
I did receive one comment just now.
Sure.
From a Napa resident, Jim Wilson. He submitted this at 6:02 PM. "I'd like to first recognize Mayor Canning and Councilmember Kraus for their work on the countywide climate action committee, and remind all that going forward, on account of the climate emergency, the carbon budget must be organizing principle. It's up to us to choose actions that help stabilize the climate, or actions and inaction that destabilize it further. I want to give you a heads up on the Health and Climate Resilience Initiative for the November ballot. The Bay Area authors are available to discuss at greater length. Most recently, they met with the mayors of Contra Costa County. Albany and Berkeley are already in the process of placing their measure on the November ballot. The measure is designed to raise revenue, to reduce carbon emissions, and sequester CO2 by raising the utility tax on large commercial polluters. Large commercial rate payers who pay over $1,000 monthly would be subject to the utility tax increase. Proceeds from the tax increase would encourage lower GHG emissions and fund local climate actions, including the transition to renewable energy. If Calistoga and other Napa County cities can put this initiative on the ballot, we think it will pass because most voters don't use $1,000 per month in utilities. They won't pay any increased utility tax. A portion of the increase in tax proceeds would go to the small rate payers to make their homes more resilient. This would create local jobs as well as sustainable commerce. The proceeds would go to the city's general fund, which would mean that only 50% plus one of the vote is needed to pass the measure. The measure would also specify that the increased utility tax will be used for local climate health and climate resiliency action. I think it's worth considering because it's something that every municipality in Napa can do. It helps reduce carbon pollution, it provides continuous funding for local climate resilience, and puts a price on carbon, and helps alleviate the revenue crisis that Calistoga and other cities are facing."
Thank you very much. And for the information of those here and those at home, when you do send us an email, I will cut off the introduction of that email, or I should say the reading of that email at three minutes, so the same rule applies, and is generally 300-ish words. Is that what we target? All right. No other emails under oral communication?
No.
All right. I will close oral communication. And we will, hold on one second. My little machine doesn't want to cooperate. All right, Michael, what's the next agenda?
Consent calendar.
Thank you. We'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented.
I'd like to...
If you're going to ask for consideration of any item under the consent calendar, we can do so during communication, the new process we're using.
All right. I'll move the consent calendar. Second.
Okay, we have a mo-
I'd like to pull item one.
We'll do that in a second.
Okay.
Trying to follow the rules that we have to now. So I have a motion by Councilmember Williams, a second by Vice Mayor Dunstford.
The other way, just the opposite.
Otherwise, sorry. Motion by Vice Mayor Dunstford, a second by Councilmember Williams. With that, is there any further discussion?
I'd like to pull item one.
Would you like to pull the item for public discussion, or would you like to make comments on the item?
I guess I'd like to make a comment.
Please do.
The comment I'd like to make is, this is a huge donation to the city being made through the Firefighters Association, and we really need to recognize, rather than just in a consent calendar item, that this, that there's someone in the community that generous to donate a fire engine to the city to replace an engine that's about 21 years old, I believe. So I don't know if Steve would like to make a comment on that, or Chief Campbell?
Chief.
Good evening. Councilman Kraus is right on this. Give you a little history on how we got the funds for that engine real quick. After the Tubbs fire, our association has an annual bingo fundraiser that we do every year, and there was an individual that was really impacted by the Tubbs fire, walked in the station, and by the end of the conversation, committed $435,000 for that engine that's sitting out front. And the money came through a different foundation to our association, and our association always supports the city. We gave a Type 5 engine last year, if you remember, about $800,000 in equipment free to the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kraus, I figured you were going to ask for discussion, so I'll take that moment to make my comment as well. Very, very generous offer, both on behalf of the Firefighters Association, which continues to do great work for us, both as their normal course of executing their work within the city, but also in their own time as well. And then to have a local resident make such an anonymous and generous contribution for the benefit of the community, certainly appreciated. Any other discussion on this item? All right, is there anything else? Any other item that anyone would like to discuss? Item number, please.
Item number three and number five, please.
Okay, on item number three, for discussion or for...?
Yes, a discussion.
Okay.
A smallish item. I'm looking at the resolution that's proposed, Attachment 1, and one to the third whereas paragraph, and it desires to submit a grant application in order to, at the end, facilitate compliance with the sixth cycle of the regional housing needs. And I'm fine with all of that. I'm not prepared at this time to approve of whereas that helps accelerate housing production. And so if the council is agreeable to striking that, I think the effect is the same, and I can also be on board in that case. Or if we want to leave that, then I can't really be approving myself, whereas that has part of its purpose, the acceleration of housing production.
Zach, would you like to address that item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel. Councilmembers certainly understand your concerns. The draft language for this is provided by HCD, and our consultant that's helping us prepare the grant application has seen applications returned to cities that don't use their actual template for resolutions. We've, you know, obviously put it in our format, but there is certain language that needs to be included. The LEAP grant specifically is intended, and SB 2 funds and SB 35 funds and everything else that's associated with it are specifically the language in the legislation to encourage an increase in acceleration of production of housing. Part of that necessarily is the preparation of the updated housing element to comply with the regional housing needs assessment that's anticipated. So I would suggest keeping the language, but we'll of course defer to your counsel.
So would it be, would the application be rejected, Mr. Tussinger, if that language is omitted?
I can't say that with any certainty, unfortunately.
Yeah. Well, all right. Because we have to comply with the regional housing, we don't have much choice on that. And so if that's the language they give us, then I'm going to go with that. All right, then I'll withdraw my objection.
You don't have an objection? You just, we're commenting at this point. Any other council members on this item?
This, adopting this plan does not change our growth target of, I think it's 1.35% annualized growth. So we're not saying that we're going to change that.
So all this resolution is actually doing is allowing us to apply for grant funding. You know, I think, as I've mentioned to the council on previous occasions, because of the new re-allocations and because of the way housing law works in California, we are required to undertake over the next year or two, a big comprehensive update of the housing element for the general plan. That takes a lot of staff time, and it takes frankly money. The state has, we're actually really lucky, has made some money available for us to complete this project. So all this is really doing is authorizing us to apply for the grant. What we're doing kind of behind the scenes at the same time is we're talking to some consultants who will hopefully put together a proposal for us to help spend that money to develop that new housing element. And of course, as part of that process, there'd be a lot of public input and, you know, community involvement, and it's, you know, frankly, going to be a multi-year process. So we're looking at potentially $65,000 to help staff complete this new housing element. And this is really just asking for the money at this point.
Comfortable leaving it on the consent?
I'm fine with that.
Thank you very much. Item number four, Councilmember Williams.
Number five, please.
Five, sorry.
Let's see. I just wanted to clarify or understand that better. It looks like we're talking about a, see, improving the filing system, computerizing the filing system. the filing system, Ms. Canucci, and it looks like the system is, or the company is offering to pay or give it to us for free for a year or perhaps two years. If we don't like it, you know, if we use it for a year or two and don't like it, can we return to a manual system without too much difficulty or the present system or a better system?
We could return to a different system at that time.
And my other question, if a day comes in the future, we hope it's long in the future, but that you're not here, Ms. Canucci, is it a system that another city clerk would likely be able to understand and work with?
Yes, fortunately, Netpile is the only provider of this service out there. Industry-wide, they are the biggest supporter of the City Clerks Association, and working with clerks to develop a program that really is universal for every city to use with FPPC and the Secretary of State's office. So it's reliable, they've been around for over 20 years, and most clerks are familiar with it. It's also very easy to use for the end user.
And then presumably it's going to, if we buy into it eventually, it'll presumably save us dollars. They're looking at $3,750 a year, and presumably we'll save at least that much in time, the clerk's time, your time?
Undoubtedly.
Thank you. That's fine, that's all my question.
And on this particular item, this keeps us compliant because of its consistent operations with the Fair Political Practices Commission, keeps us compliant, both as a city and then as individual elected officials and appointed officials as well. Okay? Anyone else for any other items on the calendar? All right. With that said, I have a motion and a second on this item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Consent Calendar carries. We have two public hearings this evening. Item number nine, first public hearing, consideration of the draft fiscal year 2020-21 operating and capital improvement budgets. The recommended action is to provide direction to the staff. Taking us through this item will be Gloria Leon, Administrative Services Director. And before you get started, Gloria, this will be the third or fourth time, okay? So just for anyone who's seen this for the first time, if you get the feeling that this is happening quickly, please understand that this has been in front of the public on four different occasions, has been in front of this council on four different occasions. But we will obviously address any questions that come up, but it is not that we're not considering the public budget an important task, it's just a long process we've gotten to to this point. So with that said, Gloria, please take it away. You need to get your mic a lot closer to you, otherwise nobody at home is going to hear you.
So tonight I will be presenting to you the fiscal year 2021 budget. As you mentioned, we have met several times in two budget workshops, May 7th and May 27th as well. Based on those two workshops in your direction, we've come up with the budget for this public My agenda tonight includes a quick summary of our annual budget process, the city council goals, the 1920 actuels, and our forecast for fiscal year 2019-20. We started our process back in March, the beginning of March. City, I presented worksheets to our department directors, and they took them back, worked on it, and what we had expected with the budget. And then in April, we set some workshop dates, and those dates were, of course, set May 7th. And after our May 7th meeting, it wasn't quite where we wanted to be in our budget, so we came back on May 27th. Today, we've got the public hearing, possibility of also of adoption of the budget. Our city council goals, we've got seven of them, and in no order of priority. First one is to maintain the economic vitality of the community and the financial stability of the city, probably one of the most important goals in our meeting today due to COVID-19 and where we are in our financial situation. Address the community's existing and future housing needs. Goal number three is to establish, improve, and maintain city infrastructure. And number four is to expand and improve recreational and community facilities. And then our last three is to always offer excellent professional services to our customers, create an environmental, sustainable community, and enhance Calistoga's small-town character by making it safe and attractive. And our goal number seven is an item that's up on our agenda tonight for further discussion. Know it's kind of small, but here's our fiscal year 2019-20 year-end estimates. Our general fund, we're anticipating to end at $5,061,057. It's up like about $30,000 from when we met back on May 27th. So not a whole lot of difference on any of our funds. Our water operations, $1.3 million. Our water capital, $265,305. Our wastewater operations, $869,532. And our capital for the wastewater, $129,834. And then our equipment replacement fund, almost close to $900,000. And then our special revenue funds, a little over $9 million. I'm going to be going over our general fund, our enterprise funds, the equipment replacement fund, special revenue funds, the development impact fees, our capital projects, community funding requests, and our debt service in the next couple of slides. First off, I want to start with revenues. This is a pie chart of the general fund. I know it's kind of hard to see up on the screen, so there are some copies in the back if people want to follow along with the presentation. Our total revenues is $8.5 million, which includes transfers in of $1,413,760. If you want to know what those transfers are, you could probably look at, I think, I believe it's page 44 in our budget book. And all those transfers in, I'll explain to you later as we go on in the other slides, they're all for capital projects. But our three largest revenue sources, our property tax at 22.5%, our sales tax at 10.7%, and our transit occupancy tax at 27.1%. Quite a different blend from what we've had in prior years. Normally, our TOT, our transit occupancy tax, is about 50% of our general fund. So you can see how this pandemic is affecting us here in the city. This is a list of our revenues, 1920 and 2021. So again, estimated for 1920, a little bit over $10 million in operating revenues, and you can see for 2021, $7.5 million. So a big drop in our revenues of at least 25%. And the biggest drop in our revenues is our transit occupancy tax by 48%. Normally, we get a little bit over, about $6.5 million a year. For 2021, we're projecting $2.3 million. Just to give you a little bit of how we came up with the $2.3 million, this was based on information from Visit Napa Valley Company Corporation, and they said that for, beginning in July, for the first three months, we would probably see about 10% of what we normally would receive in our TOT. So we took up projections from 1920 and just said, what's 10% of those revenue projections? And then October, November, December, 20% of what our normal TOT would be, and then January, 30%. And by the time we get to May and June, it's up to 70-75%. So based on $6.6 million that we had anticipated to receive in 1920, we would receive about almost $2.3 million for 2021. That's what our projections is based on our budget. So a loss of $4.3 million. We also collect the 1% for affordable housing, our Measure D, which was voted upon, and you can see, 1819, we received $247,000. 1920, we're estimating $370,000, and then 2021, $230,000 based on that $2.3 million. But you can see, if we continue to accumulate these funds, we'd have about 2024, about $2.4 million used just for affordable housing. Here's our 10-year history of what our transit occupancy taxes look like, and you can see every year it has grown. But for 1920, the year that we're currently in, you know, the pandemic hit in March, so not a whole much more anticipating hotels are opening little by little, and hopefully another month we'll have them on board. But still, the revenues from those hotels will not be what we had expected in the past. And our actuels we see through March of this year is four point, almost $4.5 million. I'm going to now go over to our expenditures, and here's the pie chart of our general fund, of our operating expenditures by departments. The largest departments are our fire services at 18.7%, our police services at 26.7%, and then our support services is 21.7%. So expenditures, 10.4, and the general fund is transferring out $477,59, $373,000 of that is for debt service, and there's about another 100, close to $100,000 to our equipment replacement fund. Here's what our new revised expenditures look like from May 27th when we came to you. We were able to bring down the expenditures to $9.9 million, so a difference of, a decrease of 9.3% from 1920. And you can see the largest departments that we were able to make some reductions were our support services at 16%, and then our planning and building, 20%, our police department by 10%, recreations by 12%, and our police services, I'm sorry, police services by 10% and recreation by 12%. Going to talk a little about employee groups. Our employee groups are comprised of the Calistoga Professional Firefighters Association, there's six of them, the Calistoga Public Employees Association, 18 members, our Police Officers Association has 16 members. The unrepresented group is comprised of mid-management, there's six members there, department directors, five, and our city manager is one. We've got 52 budgeted positions in the fiscal year 2021 budget. And we've met with all the bargaining groups, and this is what we have come up with concessions from each of the bargaining groups all across the board. We were anticipating a 3% cost of living adjustment, January 1st, 2021, that has been suspended. Also, there's 5% step increases for eligible employees effective July 1st to June 30th, and those are frozen, and step increases will resume July 1st, 2021. And then all employees, except for the Fire Association, agreed to eight hours per month of furlough. And the Fire Association, firefighters agreed to eight hours of holiday pay per month to be frozen. So they're also doing 96 hours, but because it's difficult for them to do furloughs, we have come to agreement that we would do the holiday pay, that they would give up four hours every pay cycle. The unrepresented, for those eligible employees who receive car allowance and technology stipends, those has been suspended for the fiscal year 2021. And what that brought to our budget was operating salaries and benefits. We were able to reduce that by $753,332 from the general fund, and from our enterprise funds, $151,756. Overall, concessions brought in $905,088 or 9.5%. In addition to the concessions, there's also vacancies that have been frozen. There's six full-time and three part-time, and you can see that the departments, Public Works has three unfilled vacancies, our Planning and Building has two unfilled vacancies, our Park and Recs has one, our Police and Finance Department both have some part-time positions that we have frozen for the fiscal year 2021. Overall, $781,771 were reduced or eliminated from the budget, and you can see the breakdown between the general fund and the enterprise. General fund's about half a million, and the enterprise was $264,000. Those positions, operating salaries and benefits, again, general fund, $517,000, and enterprise funds, $264,000. Overall, between the concessions and the vacancies, it's about 17.7% reduction from our operating budgets, which is about one, almost $1.7 million. One of the things on the concessions that was agreed upon between the city and the groups was that if our TOT increases by a certain amount, that we restore those items that have been currently frozen for the time being. So if we get an additional $500,000 above the $2.3 million in TOT, we would restore the 3% cost of living. If we got a million beyond above the $2.3 million, then step increases would be restored. And then if we got 1.5 above the $2.3 million, then the furloughs would be eliminated. I don't know if I should stop and ask you any questions. I've been kind of going through it, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good. So I'd like to pause for discussion and questions on the employee concessions. And just to be clear, for folks who may have missed the first few meetings we've had, we are currently in active MOUs or under current contracts with all of our employees. So the concessions that they are volunteering is certainly appreciated, they are not required to do so. And what they are acknowledging is the situation that the city is in, and more so acknowledging the situation that the residents and the businesses of the city are in because of the impact of COVID-19. So first, a thank you to our employees who did a very similar action back when we had the economic recession of 2008. So thank you very much for that. Couple of quick questions. Under unrepresented employees, here you only have, showing, demonstrating that they are giving up a car allowance and technology stipend suspended for 2020 and '21, but they also gave concessions, additional concessions, correct? Did I miss a bullet point?
No, that is correct. They've also, they've given everything up, just like all the other, all the groups are exactly the same.
Okay.
But the unrepresented-
In addition to.
In addition, are giving those two items up as well.
Okay. And then, so the total employee concessions toward balancing our budget during this difficult time is 17.7%, correct?
That is correct.
So just as a frame of reference for everyone at home, the state of California is trying to get all of their employees to get to 10%. So the fact that our employees have volunteered these concessions or agreed to these concessions at a pretty significant amount is certainly appreciated. Obviously, when we don't refill a vacancy, that work still has to get done, and that will fall- Obviously, when we don't refill a vacancy, that work still has to get done and that will fall.